Welcome to the Bossier City Council Regular Meeting, Tuesday, January 5th, 2021. Have the invocation by Councilmember Scott Irwin and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Thomas Harvey. Please stand.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. Lord, we thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed on our community. Lord, we want to pray for David and for the Montgomery family as they mourn the passing of his father. Lord, we pray they have peace beyond understanding, Lord. And Lord, we pray, Lord, for all those affected by the pandemic, and we thank you, Lord, for successful vaccines. We pray, Lord, for an efficient and orderly distribution of the vaccine. And we pray for wisdom for our nation-state and for us in this city council meeting today. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
In accordance with Louisiana Revised Statute 42:19 and the Attorney General's Open Meetings Guidance, in order to meet quorum requirements, some Bossier City Council members may be involved in the meeting via telephone or video conference. If anyone is uncomfortable in coming to this meeting, they are welcome to call 318-549-4595 at this time for public comments on any agenda item in accordance with recently passed Act 302. You must state your name and address for the record, and you will be limited to three minutes for your comments. We will allow five for an item and five against an item in accordance with adopted city council meeting rules. Please remember that this is not a question-and-answer session and that you must speak clearly and slowly so that we can understand you. Please know foul language, or the call will be disconnected, and you will forfeit your right to speak. It works, isn't it? Mr. President, there's been no public comment.
Approve the minutes, December 15th, 2020, Regular Meeting, dispense with the reading.
So move.
Second. Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve today's agenda.
Second. Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
No ceremonial matters, unfinished business?
Adopting ordinance approving the attached cooperative endeavor agreement by and among the Red River Waterway District, the City of Bossier City, and the City of Shreveport for the installation of a programmable LED light system on the Texas Street Bridge and authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the same. Final reading.
So move.
Second. Any questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance approving a license and naming agreement between the City of Bossier City and Brookshire's Grocery Company and authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute any and all documents in connection therewith. Final reading.
So move. Second. Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance prohibiting the operation of electric low-speed scooters on any sidewalk, bicycle path, public rights away, streets, or highways within the city limits of Bossier City except residential areas. Final reading.
So move.
I have all did.
We need a second.
Hold on just a second, Michael.
I can't quite hear you, but I would like to make a call about this moment.
Okay, well, we have to have a second first.
A second.
Absolutely.
All right, sir, go ahead. If you can state your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Are you ready to be on the floor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. My name is, I don't know if you've ever seen our team for rights and property located at 406 Prowl Avenue, number 369. And I want to help. So we are one of the largest shared electric scooter companies in the world today. We've got a presence in 150 markets. We were the first company to offer shared scooters at large scale. I'd like to address the proposed ordinance that would reduce the use of scooters in Bossier City. Within the last year, we've seen over 100 million rides taken on shared electric scooter. I think that figures the need that these vehicles are addressing. There's a lot of talking about that. Instead, they're the first in this group that they're getting where they need to go significantly. From my understanding, I refer the account with the safety. More studies including by cities like Portland and Miami have investigated compared e-scooter and bicycle crash rates. The findings have consistently shown parity. Another study done by the International Transport Forum, which is like a load of country, had the similar finding. Even though the rate for result lighter scooter is not particularly different from that of bicycles. As such, scooters do not appear to present an inordinate risk. Further, speaking specifically with non-organic work made for the start of travel, there are some additional features going to be included that contribute to safety, including a bell, headlights, running lights. On our fleets, the maximum speed is capped at a mile per hour, which is about the speed that the average person on a bicycle travels. Beyond the fact that scooter, going to be inordinate risk, rather, we're going to consider the benefits. During a global pandemic, they offer clean, independent, and open-air mean getting around. Further, there's some economic opportunity. Studies in London, England, Toronto, Canada, and again Portland have all shown that individuals who travel to businesses by alternative transportation spend more, and businesses accessible by alternative transportation show greater earnings. Right now, 5% of all trips on scooters end on a small business. During a time of unprecedented economic strife, I think any advantage we can give local business owners or entrepreneurs are critical. Speaking specifically of scooter share, that's the way I'm going to be directly taxable revenue. I can be kind of a no-scooter. In Bossier, 8,500 people commute work by driving alone in a car. Of those trips, 3% are 19 minutes or less, speaking to the short distance that the average resident has here in Bossier City when they're home to their place of work. Short distance would likely be addressed by transportation option like electric scooters. Scooter trips are not going to be perfect for every journey. People are going to go to Walmart or shopping for family expects on a scooter. But scooters do seem to be a perfect choice for the majority of trips taken on the average Bossier City resident. I know scooters, I know they kind of shake up the existing order, but I think there is an opportunity for council to investigate further before coming to create the, one, all, the, the available information. I would ask that the board will not pass the ordinance out for the use of electric scooter or scooter. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
You know, I have to say, I really could not understand that, what he said. Except that I think, I definitely understand he is, that was a, that was a, in support of, or, excuse me, in opposition to passing this, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, right, okay. That's a shame we don't have the, I didn't really get to appreciate his argument, for what it's worth.
Anyone have any questions?
Well, one thing I-
Number one, I think we ought to ask whoever on the sound system so that when people call in, we can understand what they're saying.
And I think he might have been talking away, because several times he's come in perfectly clear, but I think he might have been talking away from his microphone. But yes, sir, we'll work on that.
Sir, would you prefer to be called to be on the number and try to do that?
We can do that as well.
With counsel's wish. Yes, sir, if you could call in on a different line, we'd appreciate it.
Let me give you that number, Michael. It's area code 318-549-4595.
Fellas, I think it would be helpful to have anyone that comes through to tell them to speak slowly and distinctly, because it just doesn't pick up.
He was talking.
It's Michael. Can you go, can you say that again?
Are you able to hear me now? I apologize, I was obliged to leave the meeting, so that there wasn't- Perfect. I can provide my prepared statement in its entirety again, if that's useful. I'm not sure if the council has time.
Yes, sir, you can, you can do it again.
Absolutely. To start from the beginning, I work for one of the largest shared electric scooter companies in the world to date with a presence in around 150 markets. We were actually the first company to offer shared electric scooters at large scale. We are an American company headquartered in California. The proposed ordinance for Bossier City banning electric scooters, I'd love to address. What I said earlier was, within the last year, we've seen over 100 million rides taken on shared electric scooters. And I think that figure speaks to the need that these vehicles are addressing. Scooters aren't a passing fad, but rather the first in a series of tools that make it easier for people to get to where they're going. From my understanding, the primary concern of the council is the safety of the electric scooters. Some multiple studies have actually been done addressing the safety, including by cities like Portland and Miami. They investigated and compared e-scooter and bicycle crash rates, and the findings have consistently shown parity. Another study by the International Transport Forum, which includes a collection of over 60 countries, conducted a third-party study as well, which showed the same findings. The incident rate for injuries on electric scooters is not statistically different of that of bicycles. As such, scooters would not appear to present an inordinate risk to safety. Further, speaking specifically of the scooters designed by reputable scooter share companies like our own, there are some additional features that we include that further contribute to safety. Those include a bell, a headlight, running lights, brake lights, et cetera. On our fleets, we also cap the maximum speed of the scooters at 15 miles per hour, which is about the speed the average person on a bicycle travels at. Beyond the fact that scooters don't appear to present an inordinate risk to riders, I think it's also important to consider some of their benefits. Specifically during a global pandemic, they offer a clean, independent, and open-air means of getting around. Further, there is considerable economic opportunity. So studies have been done in London, England, Toronto, Canada, and again Portland, which have all shown that individuals who travel to businesses by alternative transportation, such as e-scooters or bicycles, spend more, and businesses accessible by alternative transportation show greater earnings. Right now, almost 60% of trips taken on our scooters end in front of a small business. During a time of unprecedented economic strife, I think any advantage we can give to local businesses and entrepreneurs is critical. Speaking specifically to scooter share rather than electric scooters, that's also to speak nothing of the directly taxable revenue that's generated on the scooters themselves. In Bossier City, more than 85% of people commute to work by driving alone in an automobile right now. Of those trips, 63% are 19 minutes or less, speaking of the short distance the average resident of Bossier City has from their home to their place of work. So those types of short distances are ideally suited to be addressed by a transportation option like an electric scooter. Scooter trips are not going to be perfect for every journey. I recognize that if somebody is going grocery shopping, it's going to be challenging to carry everything on a scooter. But scooters do seem to be a terrific choice for the majority of trips taken by the average Bossier City resident. I know that scooters are something new, that they shake up the existing order, and that there's still something to be learned about them. However, I think there is an opportunity for the council to investigate further before coming to an ultimate decision and gather all of the available information before reaching that conclusion. So I would ask that the council not pass the ordinance out for the use of electric scooters in Bossier City.
Thank you for repeating that. Have you heard that?
Thank you.
Is there any other?
Just a comment that crossed my mind. I noticed that this is, so prohibits the operation of all-electric low-speed scooters. So if, that's, if, in the case of one that has, is licensed, then it would also be prohibited? Is that, or is that a moot point? Are there none that are licensed, or do we know?
There's, there's a state law that allows for these unless there's a concern for public safety. So there's no, there's no licensing that is outside our domain to approve or disapprove.
Okay. So we, just, and, and I might, I'm just trying to understand. So somebody that buys an electric scooter gets, and it has a license plate on it. It's a Harley-Davidson electric scooter, I don't even know it exists. This wouldn't prohibit them from operating a licensed one on the roadway like any other licensed vehicle would?
No, a properly licensed vehicle's legal to operate. These cover these low-speed electric scooters that are not licensed, per se, by the state.
Yeah. Is it, so is it necessary that, does that, is that, the way that's written? Does it, should it have, should it qualify it as an unlicensed vehicle, or is that just, does that matter?
It's already identified as a low-speed electric scooter, which precludes it from being a licensed vehicle.
Takes care of it. Okay, good, well, that answers my question. Thank you. So my apprehension about allowing this is just, I might understand that anyone, any age right now? Is there any age requirement right now before we pass this?
I think, I think in the agreement, they had a prohibition against a certain age of 18, I believe. That they would prohibit people from operating it below a certain age. I'm not sure what that was, but, but, you know, they can put whatever standards on it they want in terms of being able to check it out and operate.
So presently, right now, if we don't pass this law, it's, it's legal for somebody to run around on a low-speed scooter on the side?
Bird ride sharing came in with an agreement, trying to get the city council to approve low-speed electric scooters with this exclusive agreement that they proposed. Option A was to either approve this, or option B was to prohibit them. And so that's what the ordinance is doing with the council right now.
Okay. So it addresses that problem and then kind of takes the rest of everything with the bath water down the drain? Okay, I understand it. Thank you.
Any further comments from the audience?
We have a motion and second.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
I voted that there.
What'd you do?
I voted against, it should be the, I guess I read it wrong, the ordinance, so.
You wish to change your vote?
I wish to change my vote.
For the record, Mr. Williams is a four.
All righty. I'll change that for you, sir.
Sorry about that.
Mr. Darby. Motion carries. Adopting ordinance amending ordinance 128 of 2019, appropriating an additional $244,670.34 from the jail and municipal capital building fund for the completion of a concrete flood wall for the police evidence and storage building. Final reading.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance amending ordinance 146 of 2020, correcting the limits and boundaries of the City of Bossier City to include the correct legal description of the 120 acres zoned residential agriculture, which adjoins the current city limits of Bossier City, Louisiana. Final reading.
So move.
Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. New business adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Trey Ferguson, RMB interest, location 1011 China Berry Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request conditional use approval for a private event center.
So move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Mastek for AT&amp;T, location 5600 Barksdale Boulevard, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request conditional use approval for a small cell tower.
So move.
Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the City of Bossier City, which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to replace sewer main located at Ross Street at a cost of $85,000 to come from the sewer capital contingency fund, and authorizes the city to enter into a contract with ASB for completion work. First and final reading.
So move.
Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance authorizing the sale of a 2008 Ferrera Pumper for $45,000 to the City of Shreveport. First reading.
So move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance authorizing the reclassification of the accounts clerk two positions and the hiring of one employee due to a retirement in the customer service department, resulting in a net neutral change to the operating budget. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance approving the hiring of Beast Engineering LLC to manage the construction of the Walter Opigbe Carriageway Phase Two. First reading.
So move.
Who's the second?
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the replacement of one Civic Center event coordinator position. First and final reading.
So move.
Second. Hey, Chief, can, just, if you could just kind of give us a brief update on the Civic Center, kind of? I know it don't have much going on, but.
Right, right now, we do have construction going on over there, that front bench with some of the savings from build and maintenance. We're able to replace it, it had termite damage all the way across the front. We did have this person leave the position about a month ago with not much going on. Maybe two months ago, I didn't ask for a resolution, but coming into the new year, hoping that with the vaccines and things, we could get somebody trained up. And we do have some, hopefully, some good things to report to y'all coming up, trying to work out some deals with some local businesses to partner up with to be able to bring some good things that we could be a partner in, events to this city that I think would be pretty good. I want to get into the details of them right now and give them away, but I will be glad, once we close this deal, to share them with y'all. And I think you'll be impressed, I think it'll do good. I think it'll give us an opportunity to hopefully get the bottom line where everybody wants it.
Fantastic. Thank you for all your hard work. Fantastic, thank you for all your hard work on that.
No problem.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve report of change order number one for the police building lighting with an increase of $1,600 for a contract price with change order of $102,600.
So move.
Second.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, we move to delete this item.
All right. Fellas, do we need a second, or?
I need a second for that.
A second.
Do we need to vote on it?
Mm-hmm.
All right, this is a vote to delete number eight.
This was at the request of the engineering department.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Yep. Mayor? Yes, sir. All right, wish everyone a great week. Meeting adjourned.